Will you all please? Please rise and join me in the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for joining us tonight. I remind you to please silence your cell phones or turn them off. Next, we have. Office. This sounds really good. Come on in, Chief. And trustees, thank you for having us tonight. This is our new officer, Fraser Pomfret. He comes to us all the way from Scotland.
Wow.
So he'll be presenting his badge tonight. He has his lovely family here. And then Paula will be administering the oath of office. I just had a few words. Officer Pomfret. I served as a peace officer prior to coming to the BVPV. So you know something of the law enforcement profession. You know, you bear responsibility for helping to keep our community safe, to those in need that you may be called on to run toward danger, acting as that thin blue line that places you in harm in order to keep our citizens from harm. You may also know that with service of this nature, there is often emotional cost on officers and their families. For these reasons, law enforcement is an honorable profession, and you have answered a noble call to service and sacrifice. I am encouraged that your family is here to support you as police families and spouses see firsthand what this job can do to an officer over the years, and they are our strongest allies and support. Take care of them and love them and do not stress and do not let the stress of the job steal your joy with. This badge is a symbol of the ideas of the ideals of fidelity, strength, and honor. It is a sacred trust given to you, not just by me, but by the citizens of Buena Vista. There is a foundation of trust between the citizens of Buena Vista and the BVPD. As a new officer, you must be a keeper of this trust. This trust is part of a legacy built by former BVPD officers and leaders, as well as the current members of the BVPD. This trust is bound to your duties, as referenced in our mission statement, to enforce the law in a fair and impartial manner by recognizing both the statutory and judicial limitations of police authority, as well as the constitutional rights of all persons. With this badge, I charge you to keep the faith, that is, to serve our citizens with courage and honor, to hold sacred the trust and authority given to you by the citizens, to be mindful of the legacy built by those who came before you, and to be firm yet fair in the administration of your duties as a police officer for the town of Buena Vista.
This is my favorite, my job, and also the most emotional. Because I consider it fun to do this. You have to.
I, Fraser Pomfret.
Swear by the ever living God.
Do you swear by the ever living God?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The ordinances of the town of Buena Vista.
The ordinances of the town of Buena Vista.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
The office of police officer.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Ikey.
Thank you, and welcome to the team. All right, take care. Our next item is the agenda adoption. And are there any additions or deletions of the agenda? And I do have an addition. It will be a second executive session.
Correct.
Had to make it midnight, Dave. I'm sorry. Do we need any elaboration on that, really?
Um, I think if you don't mind referencing what it's for and that way.
Um, I know it's a, it's the two determined positions relative to matters and subject to negotiations concerning the acquisition of water rights. So we will add that to the agenda.
I have one question on the consent agenda. Um, when we're adding these holidays, which I approve of, but how do we treat part time employees? Those holidays, do they get the full holiday, just like full time employees do?
Michelle, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. Full time comes with certain benefits such as health and dental retirement. It also comes with the paid part. So hard time does not fit that.
Okay.
Any other questions on agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second phase. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you all very much. Our next item is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Bring none. I would, actually, I will point out, almost jumped right over that. Um, obviously, we have the declaration in there, but we also are reappointing um, a good number to our planning and zoning. Phil, are we full there yet?
We are full.
Yeah, great. That's perfect to hear. Um, just wanted to point out that we are keeping up with the times. President Laramo returns, Craig Brown, um, and Tony La Greca as regular members, and Thomas Brown is an alternative. So I thank you all very much.
Not that it matters because the people that are on board are really good, but on the advisory boards, do they have term limits like we do? They do.
Yep.
Okay.
On the planning and zoning, we do.
Oh, yeah.
And then advisory, do not have term limits. They're still reappointed, am I correct?
Excellent. Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Planning and zoning.
That's right.
The planning and zoning is the only one that has terms. No, I take that back. That's not.
Advisory boards.
Because they're still, they still have, yeah, four year terms. But there is no limits on that.
Correct. In terms of consecutive, I do not believe we have terms.
Not, not the planning and zoning commission.
Right.
If you remember when we said farewell to S. Spex, he did a planning commission. That's right. He'd been there a long, long time. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Cindy. Yep. Any other questions on consent agenda? I would entertain a motion. Second. Second row. One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. Next item is public comment. As we have with Zoom, and we have the meeting open with through the Zoom chat box. Um, if you were attending by phone, you can press star nine and we will, uh, the host will prompt you to unmute and speak. Otherwise, uh, make a note, raise your hand in the chat box, and we'll go from there. And we do have people in the audience. If anybody has signed up, Paula, no sign up. Thank you very much.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. I close this portion of the meeting for public comment. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Town administrator.
Right. You in here. I gotta find my way. There we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to be brief, and I will take questions on my report, uh, which is on page twenty nine of your packet. Uh, I do want to highlight a couple of things. Uh, one, I have an incorrect date or a date that was changed just recently. But, uh, the next intergovernmental meeting now is targeted for January twentieth, which is a Thursday evening. So, uh, that will be down in the county, probably at the steam plant, as we did, uh, the, the meeting in Salida last quarter, I think was the last previous one we had. So, uh, January twentieth, Thursday, Paula and I will communicate with you more about that, but we typically leave a little before five thirty, caravan down, and it typically starts at six and, um, they better serve food. I'll make sure of that. Uh, so that. And then a reminder, I, I think the school board is still looking forward to a little work session focused on town related topics. We do, as I mentioned last time, we, we talked quite a bit about the SRO program and how the school and the town work together on that. And then I'm sure they will be interested in some of our projects, such as our, our water treatment plant expansion and our police station, probably Carbonette Street as well. There's a few things going on with us, so. Uh, look forward to that, but one or two trustees would, would be great to have, so. Contact me if you're interested in doing that. And then I, I shared this, uh, in an email, uh, but some pretty exciting news coming out of the county commissioner meeting this morning. Uh, the, it was actually leadership through the, um, Department of Human Services, part of the county, who had the funds available, but the county commissioners made the formal, uh, decision today to allocate five hundred thousand dollars towards the Boys and Girls Club new facility here in BB. So a pretty, uh, exciting bit of news there, uh, and they will be sending out a press release shortly, probably by the end of the week on that, but uh, exciting to see the countywide support on that project. I, I tried to highlight several other, um, updates throughout the report, but in the interest of time, we have a long agenda tonight. I will pause there and see if you have any questions.
Questions for Philip? Um, I do have a question for trustees. Uh, how many are, think they will attend for the school board meeting?
That'd be interesting.
Okay, so we want to publish that.
Yeah.
Make sure it gets published.
Great.
I thought there might be enough going that we would have to do something.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
We'll just notice it, and we'll have everything covered.
And thank you very much, county. That's pretty cool.
Pretty good.
Anything else for Philip?
Is the school board meeting at the school board?
At the admin building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At their building, yeah.
Yeah.
You'll just send out more information.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep. And then obviously, we'll have probably Paula, what, first of the month for the IGA?
Yes.
You'll send out something.
Information out. Sign us.
Good. Anything else? Treasure. Thank you, Philip.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. My report is on page thirty five of the packet. Um, since all of my wind power is going towards the budget part of the packet and all that information is there. Uh, all I have on this report are the large expenditures, and that's it.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? We're all going to hankered, hang down and wait, right? I do. I'm sorry, Philip. I did have a question on the franchise fee.
You bet.
Um, it's a, you're proposing to ramp it up. Is that something that is collected separately, or is that just paid by sangray?
It is collected from the end customer.
And so therefore justifying it is taking it up.
Yes, so it's not, uh, one percent to three percent all of a sudden.
Big impact.
Over a couple of years.
Okay.
Is the idea.
That was the only question there. Thank you. And thank you, Michelle. Uh, Chief, did you leave?
He did. Uh, he is on Zoom, I believe.
Is he on Zoom?
Hopefully, he's over there by now.
He may still be having a good chat.
He's on.
All right.
Hey, where are you guys talking to me? I was saying goodbye to Fraser and his, uh, crew.
Already.
Yeah, you're up, Dean.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, my chief report, I'll just be a real brief tonight. Sorry about that. I was socializing over here. Uh, we had our team meeting on November seventeenth. We talked about our department goals for two thousand and twenty-two. Um, we also discussed mental health issues related to law enforcement, um, and resources for law enforcement to include Code for Counseling out of Colorado Springs, as well as peer support. Uh, the eleventh Judicial District is, uh, starting a peer support team, and we're going to have some officers involved in that, which we're excited about. Um, Officer, or actually Investigator Lee, Amber Lee has put together a lot of resources and done some research on this. And we hope to, uh, speak to this a little bit more at the January eleventh board meeting. And I'm also going to try to have somebody from Sol Vista there as well to talk about mental health resources for the public and how we work with Sol Vista, um, on the police side of things, and also their co-response unit, which is a really great resource we have up here now. On Saturday, we did shop with the cop down in Salida. I want to thank Chief Johnson for organizing that and hosting it. Uh, we had twelve, um, kiddos from the local schools that showed up. And, um, Salida Police, Chaffey County Sheriff, and Parks and Wildlife were all able to help us out with that. And I hope these kids have a, a really happy Christmas. Um, they were able to get a lot of gifts for their families, and that was through generous donations from, uh, members of the Chaffey County community, which was awesome. Uh, Chris Green and Lance McDonald are two cadets in the academy that graduate this Thursday. Um, or next Thursday, I'm sorry, the twenty-third. Really excited about that. I'll be going down to attend their graduation. Um, like most of the town employees, the end of the year is, is a whirlwind of activity. Uh, we've got, um, all of our training records we have to enter for post and SIRSAs, as well as do our employee evaluations, so we're staying very busy with that. Um, Officer, well, that's a typo. It was Officer Di Girolamo. She's now Officer Mitchell. Uh, she just got married a couple of weeks ago, got back from her honeymoon, so we're very excited about that. Uh, so she, but she's been very active in her role as a school resource officer. And you can see the attached pictures where she was with Mrs. Drawbridge's, uh, special needs class and talking to them about police and police work. Um, speaking of mental health, we've had an unusual amount of mental health issues lately. And it's been great to, to have Sol Vista as that resource, the co-response unit that we can call to, to help us with calls like that. Um, unfortunately, as the holiday season approaches, sometimes you do see an increase in things like that. Um, we had the Parade of Lights on December fourth. That was very successful. Um, for those of you that have been to previous parades, and in my view of things, that seemed like it was one of the, the largest parades I've seen. Maybe it was because the weather was nice, but there was a very large crowds out there, which was good to see. Um, big thank you to Public Works for helping set up all the barricades. Um, also, we had a good police presence. Uh, we had it in our minds what happened in Wisconsin at the Christmas parade tragedy. And, uh, we wanted to have a strong police presence, presence to, um, ensure our citizens were safe and that they felt safe. So I really want to thank the Chaffey County Sheriff's Office and Colorado State Patrol for helping us out with that. And lastly, as we go into, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, we've got a lot of big plans ahead. Um, we're going to be busy. Um, hopefully, we can be a little more proactive in some things because we're going to have three new officers on the road. Uh, Fraser, who you just met, and then, um, Green and Lance McDonald. So we're, uh, we're excited to, to move forward in two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, and, um, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Chief? Comments? Um, you know, I appreciate and thank you for pointing out Sol Vista, Chief. Uh, we're fortunate to have in this smaller community that kind of outreach and that kind of cooperation. Very important, very important.
I agree. Over the years, we haven't always had that, and our officers have, have become very skilled at, at talking to people and dealing with people in crisis, but having that additional resource, um, is, is really nice. And it's helpful to us and the citizens.
Thank you, Chief, and we appreciate your report. Very informative. Next, Recreation Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Uh, our report is on page forty-nine of your packet. Um, starting off with programming, it's been a very successful and busy fall. I finished up youth basketball. We still have adult basketball and volleyball going on, and the team's been working really hard to prepare all of our opportunities for the winter season, which is January through April. So in the very near future, you build a log on and start to register for some of these up and coming, um, great wintertime rec activities. Um, a lot of the traditional pieces are continuing to go on, but, um, we're excited to bring back our Demon Diggers Youth Volleyball Program this winter and youth, um, Open Gym Soccer, um, some spring pickleball tournaments, um, and lots of other activities. So it's been a busy, busy fall, and we're looking forward to a busy winter. Um, thus far, um, COVID has not been a factor. Um, we're able to continue with some precautionary measures to make sure people are safe and having lots of fun. Um, on my end, from the director's report, I'm very just proud of how we finished up in two thousand and twenty-one. And we were able to bring on Jenny, our new administrative assistant, and many staff members and community members have gotten to meet her. Um, she is a great asset to our team. She'll be working roughly twenty hours a week to be the, uh, face and voice of BB Recreation. Um, so really excited. This last couple of months, we've been working on the rec department restructuring. Um, we sent out job descriptions and, uh, the opportunity for people to provide, um, us with resumes and updated cover letters. Um, we're able to go through the, the interview process this week, and we got a really strong candidate, and Philip and I are meeting up on that tomorrow and be making some final decisions here in the very near future. And as we're wrapping up two thousand and twenty-one, we're, um, going over what we've accomplished this year and focusing on goals as, um, individual staff members and also, um, department goals for, for next year. Um, a lot of exciting things on the horizon. Um, our ICE committee just met up with a group in Nethrop. That's entertaining the idea of a very large facility for, um, indoor ice and, um, other indoor sports activities. And we're going to get a update, uh, tomorrow at our Rec Advisory Board meeting. Um, the town continues to work with NES, who's helping with our rodeo grounds in Chicago Ranch master planning process, and just very, um, excited and encouraged with the work that they're doing. Um, they're professionals and they're very experienced, but, um, they're doing a great job working with our survey results, which we had about two hundred and fifty, um, local people take the survey. They presented to staff their initial concepts. We gave them a lot of feedback. And they'll come back to our community on the twentieth of January and present a, uh, high level bubble map for us as, um, community members to provide additional feedback. Um, we also started another project with UC Denver School of Architecture and Planning. Um, they were the ones that helped us with our town block, uh, master planning concept at the community center. Um, last year, we got a couple of new students. They're going to help us build, uh, layered GIS mapping tool that allow us to really understand what we have, parks and facilities and, um, trail wise, and also what's planned for future development. So it'd be a great tool for staff to have, but also a great tool for, um, event organizers and other programmers to have. Um, in early January, we get to present, uh, face to face to the Land and Water Conservation Fund and Colorado Parks and Wildlife for our two big grants that are out. Um, and we will get final word on those in March and April two thousand and twenty-two. Some other exciting news, the Army Corps of Engineers just issued our permit for our in-stream improvements for the River Park, the Whitewater Park, the Pocket Wave two point oh. Um, those permits are hard to come by these days, um, but we were excited to get the news late last week. Peak to peak pickleball, just quick shout out to them. They're continuing to be successful in their fundraising measures for our new courts facility. And they were just awarded another forty-five thousand dollars from the Daniels Fund to contribute to that project and also received eleven thousand dollars from the Chaffey County Women's Who Care. Um, again, the Parade of Lights is, um, the mention was a great success, so thank you to PD and Fire and Public Works for making that so, um, so well organized, and Ben was a great part of that through our department, um, making sure everyone was in the right place, doing the right things at the right time. So super safe and enjoyable for most everyone that was out there. Um, facility updates, um, rentals continue to come in for our community center and parks and pavilions. Um, we're still focusing on our, no ability for the public to reserve unless it's sixty days or less that allows our town to make sure we get in what we need to reserve for meetings and programming. Um, rental fees are on target for two thousand and twenty-one, and total rentals, including town activities, were eight hundred year to date, eight hundred individual reservations. So Ben is staying very busy, um, but we like to see all those inquiries and, and reservations coming in. Um, two thousand and twenty-two, there's a lot of planning going on and discussions about how we'll view events in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, there's been some letters sent out by the BVBA to, um, our trustees um, and mayor, and we're excited to sit down and, and chat with them as staff when the timing's right. We're passionate about music and arts and culture, and just want to make sure that events are organized and designed well, so they're enjoyable for everyone and safe for the community. So looking forward to those conversations. Um, and two thousand and twenty-one, events, we were able to permit thirty. We had seventeen cancellations, twenty peaceful gatherings, and two thousand and twenty-two, we're already receiving new applications for special events. Um, seven have been received and we're actually approving and permitting some early now to get a jump start. Um, that's the tip of the iceberg as usual. Um, any questions from the trustees or mayor that have answered?
Thank you, Earl. Questions, go ahead.
I just have a, a random question. Um, with the youth basketball league, when you guys partner with, like, the local teams, I know you partnered with the boys' basketball team, but is there interest from the girls' team as well? Just because if it's a youth thing, it's nice to have everybody represented for representation and, you know, encouragement, so.
Just. Yeah. Absolutely. That's a great question. So yeah, our partnerships, um, for youth basketball are connected with Scott Kreitz, who's the boys' basketball coach. Um, so he networks with his team members to help out with that, and that's a great suggestion. I'll bring that up to Shane. But on the flip side, for our youth volleyball program, which is also co-ed, we have Jamie Page from the women's, um, volleyball team do that, so it's primarily women's, um, or women that are helping coach and assist that, but no, that's a, that's a good, good point, and, um, I'll ask Shane and the team what they think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Any other questions for, for comments?
Real.
Thank you, Earl.
Yeah, hey, real quick, um.
Yes.
Paula's gonna hand out a little holiday gift to all of our trustees and mayor. We're trying to figure out the best time to do it. Um, while she's doing that, I'll just read a letter from our department to the mayors or the mayor and the trustees. Um, we just wanted to express our sincere gratitude for everything that you do to make Buena Vista great. We appreciate your hard work, compassion, commitment to guiding our town into the future. May this gift remind us of our, our accomplishments and the potential we all envision in the years ahead. Have a great, safe, and joyful holiday. Sincerely, the Buena Vista Department. That's Tucker and Shane, Jenny, uh, Ben and Earl. And, uh, a little backstory on this photo was taken by one of our friends and colleagues, Logan Myers, who helps run our disc golf course in town here. We took it from the top of the Sleeping Indian, but, uh, when I saw this picture, I fell in love with it because, one, it shows the beauty of our town, but also all the things that we've, um, built and constructed over the last several years, but also seeing all the space and opportunity for future development and growth. So this is a gift for you to put up on your wall or on your refrigerator, and just want to say thanks and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Earl. Next is, uh, report from Fire Chief. Bergman on?
Hey, we're having their final meeting of the year tonight as well, so.
Hey, we're having their final meeting of the year tonight as well, so.
If he comes in, we could.
Yeah.
When do it that way?
Sure.
Okay, next item is business items. First item is public hearing, a major subdivision for South Main Phase Two. South Main Phase Two preliminary plat and final plat. Twenty lots, two tracks and seven outlots. Um, I opened up the public hearing, I will hear from staff first.
Uh, Mayor, we'll have the applicant present and then staff will follow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Pull up the presentation for.
And JJ, if you would, please state your name.
For the record. JJ, kids father, five swift circle for shopping. Uh, thank you for having me here this evening, uh trustees, appreciate your time to come and. Uh, take a look at our project and uh I'd also like to say thank you to uh staff for having helped us move this project along. Uh, quite expeditiously, it's it's uh not necessarily a huge project in term. Of area, but uh it was a big undertaking to get here tonight, so thank you very much for all of your assistance with that. Uh, so South Main is a approximately forty acre project that was. Uh, brought to the town in two thousand four, two thousand five, somewhere in that time period. Uh, it's a PUD and uh subscribes to the concept of uh new urbanist design, so. Uh, a mix of uses, a rich mix of uses, walkability, shared spaces, these are the things that uh. Make this neighborhood. You think to be a really great place and a place that people can come and enjoy and recreate and. Um, you know, come and come and have a good reason uh to come visit BB. Uh, the entire project was uh master plan, so all the streets and uh the general lot configuration. Uh, the whole thing was uh put together uh with the original planning documents and we are just now. Sixteen years later, getting into the second phase uh of the project. Um, you know, the our town is uh growing rapidly now, was not always growing so rapidly. But uh, you know, we've been through a variety of ups and downs and economic times and different things. Uh, but slowly but surely, we've we've uh worked to complete, you know, our vision and uh it's um. It's really turning into the place that we had hoped it at, uh it would be, and so we're very excited to to get into the next phase uh of the project here. Um, what you're looking at here on this map, so in white, is all of. Phase one, so uh everything out there is. Uh, completed at this point, the roads, the the lots, there's there's maybe a couple lots that. On, um, but generally speaking, that's that's the area that you know of as South Main when you go out there now. Um, the portion along the river, as as you may recall, or some of you may not know the history of, when this was, project was first approved, uh. We we dedicated that land to the town. Uh, so that the the river frontage could be available for for public use and the enjoyment of everybody in this town, we worked with the town and the county. Uh, to uh obtain GOCO money, lottery money to help build trails and the whitewater features in the river. And uh do do a variety of things to kind of make this the sort of. Uh, rich environment it deserves to be, it's it's an amazing location between the historic downtown and uh the beautiful Arkansas River. So uh, our phase two is the areas that you see here. In red, these are the lots that we are uh bringing uh forth tonight. And it's uh consists of approximately twenty lots for building on, uh those are in red. There are two areas in green which are um. Uh, tracks, I believe is the terminology, um, it's escaping me now, but we have a drainage detention pond and a parking lot. And uh in gray, you have areas of uh public infrastructure improvement, so. Um, it it as opposed to one large section of uh development, what's going on here is we have small pockets uh. Of uh new lots, islands that are being filled in in spots that were previously. Uh, not completed and the and the reason it's like this is because. Uh, much of the infrastructure that was in phase one, the streets, the sewer mains, the water mains. Uh, a lot of that infrastructure was already in place. During the course of construction of phase one, even though some of these adjacent lots were not part of that phase, so now um. There's not that much new public infrastructure being proposed with this this phase, there's a a small portion of Pine Street. Um, there's a couple of alleys. Um, there's a little bit of infrastructure here and there, but fundamentally, a lot of these lots. Already really had everything they needed to be built upon, they just weren't part of the uh approved uh planet plots that uh part of phase one. Um, in gray, you can see the areas that are going to be improved, as I said, there's a little bit of Pine Street. There's uh a little bit of River Park Road and um one of the things that I know has been of great concern to many in the community. Is uh the connectivity of uh the South Main Square and the Riverfront uh down to Arizona Street. So part of this proposal here is to uh pave River Park Road. To complete that connection for both fire access and for the general public, just so that there's a clear and. An easy way to come in and out of the neighborhood. Um, excuse me, uh, in the sort of area four in the southeast of the. Uh, map here, you can see sort of an orangish looking area. Um, this is not a phase two, but is an area, excuse me, is an area that is uh. To be utilized for um parking and uh. Uh, in in the summer months when people come to John to uh this part of the uh the town. Uh, you know, there's a lot of people at the waterfront, there's people uh visiting the hotel, the. The Eddie line, um, coming and and doing a variety of recreational activities, this is an overflow parking area down there. So it's uh, it's not developed, it's just a dirt lot, but uh town has worked with us to kind of. Create a way to uh utilize this area, but also manage it, so it's not just kind of an uncontrolled sort of spillover of uh. Of parking and and whatnot. Um. The uses proposed for these lots, um, you, there are, there are two zones within South Main. The mixed use and mixed residential zone. Um, roughly half of these lots are are mixed residential, meaning they will uh. Likely be houses or townhouses or apartments or things of that nature. Um, some of the other lots uh are of some uh mixed use, which would allow all of those residential uses, but also permits other things like. Uh, shops and restaurants and uh other uh retail establishments. Um. It's been a long road to get here, certainly, and uh. We're happy to finally kind of have uh completed phase one and. Uh, we're really looking forward to to moving forward with. Not just phase two, but more and more of this project, it's it's been a long time in the coming. But I think uh the town has grown and Colorado's being the popular place that it is, there's. There's such a need for housing in in our community, so we're excited to to kind of move through this and into future phases as quickly as we can. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any question after uh gives them.
Okay, thank you, JJ, should stay available, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight for you, we have South Main Base Two preliminary plat and the public improvements agreement. So there is also a a resolution for the public improvements agreement or PIA as we call it. Um, little bit of logistics for you, the staff work starts, you're packing on page fifty six. We have a new water report that's on page sixty one and I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, the preliminary plat that you guys are looking at is on pages sixty two through sixty four. There are draft planning and zoning commission minutes in your packet, um, that will go to the planning and zoning commission tomorrow for approval. But the draft is in in your packet on page ninety three. Um, the resolution for the um preliminary plat is on page is on page ninety six. The resolution for the public improvement agreements, it starts on page one hundred. And the public improvements agreements itself starts on page uh one oh one and the cost estimates for that startup page one hundred and ten. So with that, let me go through this. So what they are proposing is twenty billable lots, that is requires a major subdivision. Um, they've already done their sketch plan that was for way back to two thousand four. So they are proceeding with a preliminary plat and a final plat. Um, tonight before the the board, um, we did go to the planning zone for recommendation, then posed to the board for final decision, that's what we're presenting it to you for tonight. And then if the final plat is in performance with the preliminary plat, the town administrator can approve it if it matches your approval. Um, additionally, there is a public improvements agreement that you guys do have to. Have a resolution to approve, to accept those public improvements, so that. Once public improvements are completed at town standards, then the town takes ownership. Of those public improvements, so things like roads and water lines. Um, the preliminary plat provides a process to the town to review an overall plan for the proposed subdivision to ensure compliance with the code and the comprehensive plan. Or trustees shall review the preliminary plat application pursuant to the code criteria, shall prove, prove with conditions or deny the preliminary plat. The final plat is to make sure that the the it the the subdivision completes, the subdivision process ensures compliance with. Their plans would make sure it's the same as what you have seen. And all applicable standards in the unified development code in the town's municipal code. Or must also approve the public improvements agreement or PIA as we call it for short. Um, this, that are associated with construction plans that are submitted as part of the final plat. Final plat is then recorded, then immediately after that, the public improvements agreement is recorded. Uh, preliminary plat, there are ten criteria for evaluation that are called out in our code, I'll just briefly go through this, one, to make sure it's consistent with conference plan, two. Beats zone district standards, three, used eventual design and other development standards. Particularly for this development, because it is a planned unit development, it has its own zone standards, those are all identified in the South Main. Four, provides lots, roads, driveways, utilities, drainage facilities and other services to minimize land disturbance, maximize connectivity, maximize open space, preserve sensitive areas. Provides mitigation in natural hazard areas. Provides public water sewer system connections, meets the town's water supply, infrastructure and rights. Provides open space, meet the town's requirements. It defines the responsibility for maintenance of roads, open space and other pub- public and common facilities. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight and then provides a rational phasing plan for development as it relates to infrastructure. Then final plat, we review it to make sure that it's consistent with preliminary plat, including any conditions of approval. The development has to comply with all the requirements of the UDC and in particular, it has to comply with the standards in the South Main PUD. And that has to apply with the applicable technical standards specifications out by town, so things like. Water line sizes, materials, those kinds of things, we reviewed to make sure that the construction plans meet the town's requirements. So on the screen before you is the site in pink, the pink is, this is a town zoning map kind of blown up. South Main is in pink, shown as um a PUD zone and then. Once you get into the PUD zone, it's broken down into uh some districts that they have. They have a mixed use district, an open space district and a residential mixed use district. Um, kind of give you an aerial photograph of the site, so South Main in its entirety is in blue. Then you can see the existing developments pretty much concentrated in the northeast corner. This is a simple graphic of the proposed plat. Um, with boundary of South Main in blue. And with the proposed lots, tracks and outlots. And I'll get a little bit more into that here on this drawing. As JJ said, the lots that they are looking to have build, buildable um lots for construction, whether it's residential or commercial are shown in red. The open space on the north side of the property, which is to the top. That is actually a drainage and detention facility that serves the whole subdivision. So that's a common open space area, then you'll see track two in more in the center. That is a tract for a common parking lot, so that will be owned and maintained by. The owners of the property and um will not be in town ownership. Then you'll see in white yellow, there are what we are calling outlots, so that's plating describing the properties. For inclusion into the subdivision, but outlots must go through further subdivision processes. So we're just creating one big lot or uh space of land that will come back as other phases come through. Gray is public improvements, um, the blue is a temporary drainage in uh detention facilities. That are uh proposed down south in, because they are um. Wanting to delay putting in the final uh. Uh, pond that will go on outlaw three and we'll see that as part of any subdivision in the future. And then that orange area is the temporary parking. Any questions before I move on there, anything?
Questions?
Great, thanks. So they are proposing a phasing plan, um, they're trying to fill in the holes of the Swiss cheese, so the phasing plan that we're looking at right now is the blue. Yellow is what was built in phase one, so there were a couple holes of dollars, so we're filling those in. And then other colors are other faces that will come later. Um, there is residential mixed use district as part of that, there are ten lots that are. Here, I highlighted the residential mixed district in purple and then have some. Areas showing those residential mixed lots. So this is in the northeast corner, our northeast of the corner of the subdivision, there are three lots up here. Um, that will be developed. And then you get to kind of the lower part, you have. Um, residential mixed along River Park Road to the west of what's currently built. You'll see two lots that are highlighted in yellow, those are lots that don't necessarily meet all the standards. For that particular, for all the uses in that particular zone district. On that to your attention, there are uses that are allowed there, but. With the way South Main's PUD is shaped. Different uses have different minimum lot size, so we call them that out, that there's a couple of uses. On those lots that necessarily won't be done in these, in this example, those two lots. Do not are are not large enough to have uh multifamily units on them, but they can have. Um, a uh single family house, a row house or a live work unit on. And then to the right, you'll see the other district shown in tan, those are, those are two lots over by Blackfellow. The east of Blackfellow. And those are in the mixed use district. And then going back up to the northwest part of the subdivision along South Main. You'll see lots um that are proposed to be built as part of this plat. Again, you'll see three lots shown in yellow, one on the north side of South Main. Um, that is a lot that does not allow for a single family detached house or multifamily because of its size. And then you'll see two lots down on the south side of Pine that do not allow for. Uh, multifamily because of their size, they don't meet the minimum lot size, but those lots do have the minimum lot size for other uses that are allowed. So just calling that out to your attention, and then they're plating a lot, one block four. Um, this is a the vacant space that's across the street from the park on Front Loop. So they are plating that into one lot at this time, I anticipate that we will see further subdivisions of this as they move forward. Um, and again, as I said on page sixty one, we put a water um report in your. Packet, is something new that staff has come up with to um deal with the water master planning that we are doing. So we I've uh highlighted on the screen the amount of water that we have in, based on dry year calculations, we have five hundred and thirteen. They are proposing twenty SFEs and you'll see down at the bottom, with these twenty will be at four ninety three. So we do have the ability to serve water for it. Additionally, South Main is paying a water dedication fee as required by our. Um, I don't want to give you a view of what you'll be seeing as you drive in from Arizona. So there you'll see the um South Main property is kind of shown in blue, it's kind of hard to read. Um, then you see this dark gray area, that will be River Park that gets paved. Just the two lanes or River Park will be paved all the way from where the pavement ends on River Park, all the way out to Arizona. And then you'll see this light kind of yellowish gray. Um, that will be Ramsour Road that's realigned to tie into that. And the area where Ramsour connects to Arizona will be removed and restored to um native vegetation. So the Ramsour Road will not come into Arizona directly anymore where we have a weird five spoke intersection. So it will turn into River Park Road. So there will be one road in uh for River Park. And then if you want to go to Ramsour, it will then make a right to then continue on. So they're realigning Ramsour Road as part of this proposal. Um, with that, is the, if the board of trustees accepts staffs and the planning and zoning commissions conclusions and recommendations should have proved the preliminary plot with conditions. Uh, we did take this to the planning zoning commission on December first. They made a uh recommendation of approval with conditions after our attorney and staff has um has edited those. These are the conditions that we are recommending to the board. First one, any remaining review comments by town staff, town attorney, RG and associates in this sanitation district, any other referral agencies shall be addressed prior to the recording of the final plot. Things like typos and, and survey costs, we want to make sure we get correct. Uh, two, a site plan shall be submitted and approved for track two. That is the common parking lot. Prior to the start of any construction of the parking lot and landscape areas, the review of the site plan may trigger additional processes such as the vacation rights away or encouragement permits if needed. Um, something the applicants identified that the alignment of rights of way and the parking lot that they're working on designing may have some configurations because we don't have consistent rights of way in the alleys that surround it. So in one instance, the alley actually gets a little bit wider. So it's not parallel lines, it's kind of angle. And we can talk about that if you want. Three, detached single family homes, multifamily buildings is defined in the amended South Plan PD zoning text are not allowed on lot eleven block two. And multifamily buildings is defined in the amended South Main PD zoning text are not allowed on lots six, seven, six and seven of block six and lots one and two of block nine. So that's the yellow lots that we were talking about. Five, the applicant shall restrict vehicular access south of the proposed drainage facilities shown in the construction plans to maintenance and sewer lift station and detention facilities. Temporary parking access south of the detention facilities to the public shall be subject to additional town review and approval for special events that only limit parking to the duration of those special events. So that's dealing with that orange area that we showed you. That orange area is allowed to have parking, but south of there is drainage facilities and sewer uh lift station. So we want to make sure that those are being maintained um for those final installations. Six, no later than June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So this is right before July fourth. River Park Road shall be constructed as shown in the approved construction drawings for phase two. Concurrently, Ramsour Road shall be disconnected from Arizona Street and reconfigured to connect to the pavement for River Park Road as identified in the approved construction. All disturbed areas shall be received and maintained to prevent weeds. So this is dealing with the pavement of River Park Road and the realignment of Ramsour. The pavement for River Park Road will not be the item that the town accepts for maintenance because they will be in with other phases, putting in other improvements such as the sidewalks curve and gutter and any water or sewer connections that have to go to those existing facilities. So some point down the road, we anticipate River Park Road is going to need to be worked on. And then when that's done, they'll then accept River Park Road public improvement, but we're not accepting the phase two. Seven, the applicants engineer shall certify the drainage facilities on track one were installed as a design. And that detailed as built, prepared um per the code are signed by professionals here should be provided by public works no later than August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The drainage facilities are in, but we want to make sure that they're built as they were designed, make sure that they're containing those drainage flows. And it give us an as-built. We have not received those. So that is one of the things that we're going to have them do as part of the, this approval. And right, prior to the issuance of, of the latter certificate of occupancy for lot fourteen or lot fifteen, block seven, the public sidewalk and surf street shall be constructed as identified in the proof construction plan. So that's the two lots east Black Borough currently. Um, there will be a, an alley, which is actually going to be named Surf Street that's built to the east of South Maine. Prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for lot one, block three, the alley known as alley one and town, town approval obtained. Prior to recording of any plot for outlaw one, owner must enter into a public improvement room with the town which establishes the deadline paid alley one. So right now we're getting the alley to be gravelled. We know that there's additional work that will be done on that block when they come into subdivide outlaw one. Number ten, any portions of phase two improvements will be restored back to native grasses and maintained to prevent weeds. Number eleven, prior to the additional on-street parking being designated, the owner will address how on-street parking will be allocated phase two and later phases that involve any of the approved portions of of outlaw shown on this plot, subject to the approval of the town. Any portions of disturbed areas for construction will be restored, restored back to native grasses and maintained correctly. So there, the PUD for South Maine has an on-street parking allocation system that it, in, in applicant can get use of on-street parking to meet their off-street parking requirements. And South Maine is tasked with um uh keeping track of that and informing the town as to how those get allocated. So more to come on that as, as they move down their development. And then lastly, all plot ounces required by the town shall be shown on the final plot. That is the recommendation for, with the conditions for the preliminary plot. And then additionally, there is a separate resolution in your packet that um the uh if the board agrees with staff's recommendation, it should make a separate motion to approve the associated public improvement agreement and associated escrow agreement for South Maine phase two PUD to allow the final plot to be reviewed and approved by the town administrator once the applicants have met the conditions of the preliminary plot. With that, I will shut up and take questions.
Just these questions for staff. Comments? Go ahead, Libby.
Um, I'm getting comments from people about parking that the parking is already tight down there, um particularly around, say, Dr. Gibbs' office. Um, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to find parking there sometimes. And they were thinking that it has to do with a surf hotel perhaps. But um I just don't know how it's going to get better.
Well, the South Maine PUD approval does allow for on-street parking to meet and off-street parking requirements. That was one of the um items of approval of the South Maine PUD back in two thousand five. The um South Maine Hotel, when it was approved with its special use permit, I believe, allocated, I correct if I'm wrong, JJ, but I think it's sixty-four spaces on street on, in various streets within the existing phase one of the subdivision. That being said, there are in plans and um that they'll be working on for construction of the um paved parking lot on track two. And that orange area on this graphic is going to be a temporary parking's uh lot during phase two. Doesn't mean that it's going to remain for long term. So it is one of the items that South Maine does have the ability to have on-street parking count towards its off-street parking requirements. And we did receive a letter from um the uh a neighbor and I will read that for you. I believe Paula, our town clerk, sent you a copy of that. Um, the comment came from um Tracy Hallen and Jim Skelding, who resides at nine oh seven Main Street. Said they support phase two expansion of South Maine, but have a concern. As it stands right now, summer months present significant parking problem near around Surf Hotel. This particularly challenging since our building houses two medical offices that often have patients that lack mobility. Phase two includes the addition of many lots and parking allocation for these lots. However, it also includes development of lots eight and ten, that's that far northeast uh Swiss cheese hole that we're filling in, which are currently being used as thirty parking spaces for the Surf Hotel. Eliminating these spots will only exacerbate current parking deficiencies. I've expressed my concern to JJ and he indicated that phase two also includes the paving of the current dirt lot, which is planned to contain fifty-eight stalls. Since this lot is already in use, it is reasonable that only ten more stalls will be gained by a planned lot. It still adds another twenty cars or so to the streets around the surf. We feel a reasonable accommodation would be that the planned paved lots in future phases be pulled into phase two to relieve the pressure on South Maine residents, businesses and the surf. Sorry that we're unable to attend this evening, but we can be reached via phone for any further information required. That's what was sent to staff and we forwarded on to the board today.
Was the uh question, I guess pertaining to that letter then with the proposed parking that was proposed back with the original plot for the original PUD? There was not a hotel uh in that original plot, was, am I correct?
The original PUD allowed for hotels isn't allowed use.
Right, okay.
But that hotel was approved until twenty fifteen.
Right. And so parking in that area would have been affected by that placement of that hotel, just, just to comment. Does that, that kind of makes sense? So it would have changed how the parking would have worked. Had there not been a hotel, then it wouldn't be a factor at this point. But the effect, the impact of the hotel has brought more parking to the area. So hearing that comment, it makes sense that it's an impact if they're going to now build on that area that they're parking in. Makes sense, makes sense.
And the uh hotel did get use of on-street parking to meet its off-street parking requirements per the PUD that was approved in two thousand five. So it is meeting code.
Right, okay. There are some dates specified, uh twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. What if those deadlines are not met? What kind of, what do we see? What's the criteria? Maybe Jeff needs to answer that. Um, Jeff, you, you understand what I'm saying? There's some deadlines. For example, I believe the uh River Park Road twenty twenty-two, am I correct?
Correct.
Um, what happens if that does not happen? Where, where do we stand?
We have the ability to withhold building permits until they can complete what's required. Um, we also have um a public improvements agreement, which gives us security to basically use that security to complete the public improvements if they don't.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, trustees?
Forgive the tangent that I always send us on, but can, can I ask for uh a history or an explanation of the, the PUD process and its limitations? Um, I think maybe Norman Duff are the only ones that may have been here when the original PUD happened, but a PUD, I, I get the point of it. It's its own. It has zoning variances for parking and roads and setbacks and whatnot. And it was put in place in two thousand six. Are there limitations on, on, on dates or how this goes forward or revisitations or stuff like that? Hotel got changed. And there's amendments to this.
Yes, so, yes, there's a long history. And if you want to uh get an idea of that history, it's in the planning and zoning commission report that's in your packet, but it was pages and pages of things. But basically, when the PUD was approved back in two thousand five, um it set in place requirements for the development of that property. It also had a vesting period of fifteen years and that vesting period has expired. So the, the ability for the regulations in the PUD have the potential to be changed. We have been working with the applicants to get them to this point where they could make a second phase. And then pretty much the discussions have been that, I'll turn this over to Philip and, and Joseph, that after phase two, we will have a big conversation about the PUD for phases three, four, five and six. We are trying to get this done so that we can see, see further development and that we can then have a big conversation about the development that follows.
Okay, before I lose my thought, can I, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
So we're using rules for the PUD even though it's expired and they're different than the UDC.
The rules are still in place. We haven't changed the rules. Besting says we can't change the rules for a certain period.
Okay.
We, we haven't changed the rules yet. The rules are still in place. The vesting has expired.
So Mark, uh explained that correctly. Jeff, do you just want to reiterate?
I could jump in. I saw like there's, there's always some confusion about what it means when vested rights have expired. So vest, when, the expiration of vested rights does not mean that the approval has expired or the approved zoning has expired. Vested rights is a concept that basically says that if a municipality approves a development and certain zoning for the development, that during the vested rights period, however you define that, um, the town cannot change its zoning rules or other similar type land use rules in a way that basically would require or prohibit or negatively impact the already approved development. So for the vested rights period, you have a PUD in place. The town can't come in there and then all of a sudden change the height limit from say forty feet to twenty feet and then basically impact that already approved PUD during that vested rights period. But once that period's over, the approvals are still in effect. Developer can still proceed, but the town is no longer limited in passing new land use regulations that might actually affect that approved development. So the approved version stays in place, but the town can change the rules via its legislative authority. So hopefully that makes some sense.
Yeah, that, that, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I guess then, then if I'm understanding that right, what we did in the UDC previously, the rewrite of the code did not include South Maine because of the vested rights.
Correct. Generally, I, I guess that i- if, if there were any, if there are any provisions in the UDC that actually affect what can happen um in South Maine, they wouldn't impact South Maine during the vested rights period. But you know, one of the one of the characteristics of a PUD is that it's kind of its own zoning. And so you know, the, the UDC has lots of zoning regulations for other, other zone districts, but I, I'm, I'm I'm not aware of anything in the UDC that directly would alter the PUD for South Maine. Now that's me, maybe I'm not aware of it, but there could be some provisions in it that might affect South Maine, but I'm not aware of anything specific, even with, even without vested rights. But maybe Mark has a better take on that than I do.
Well, and I, and, and the way I interpret that is when we were looking at the UDC as a board, it was a standalone PUD, so we didn't apply any of what we were talking about to that area. We were on Main Street. We were on residential old town. Like I say, it did not affect that area anyway. I mean, we just didn't go there.
Yeah, I, I was, I was a little confused. I, I think that, you know, that there wasn't any sort of specific exemption exempting South Maine because it, you know, your zoning code applies throughout the entire town, but there just wasn't anything that actually directly impacted it. So.
Right, right. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, no, you're welcome.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
So any other questions for staff?
Other question?
Yes.
I remember we talked about the bathroom. The public bathroom when when we were talking about the front loop, you know, many months ago. Is that ever, is that in the plan anywhere?
That is not a part of phase two. It's the original approval that has to be done prior to phase, prior to phase threes approved.
Oh, okay, so we were talking about speeding it up. Yeah.
And that still could be in the discussion. It is not, it was not recommended by P and Z. So, you know, like I say, in their conditions. Not saying it couldn't be, is that correct?
And and to be clear, it was not submitted as a part of phase two from the applicant.
Got you.
So it's not it's not even part of her view of phase two necessarily from a. It's required for phase three. Under the current approvals.
Other questions, Norm?
But with the way this area is growing. Couldn't it, couldn't it be moved up? The bathroom part of it?
You know, I honestly haven't looked at the bathroom issue for a considerable period of time. So it we I, I mean, the short answer is if we are making accommodations that we do not have to make. As part of phase two. Then we are, is that 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 topic will be open for negotiation. With South Main. Basically as a condition of what we're going to be doing. Making accommodations for phase two that we don't need to be making under the agreement. I just haven't reviewed it carefully, so I don't want to say. Absolutely one way or the other.
Does that make sense, Norm?
Makes sense, but be to me, that would be a. A good neighbor. Type of thing to implement that with this area is growing.
And if if I may.
Yes.
To be to be fair, South Main, the applicant have have been willing to talk about the public restrooms. And there are a variety of other topics that we want to address, both the applicant and us. As our related development agreement, as well as P U D, as well as to phase three of future development. That we feel like are are of such importance that need to be addressed before we consider further applications beyond phase two. So as we think about public restrooms, as we think about future phases. We want to make sure that we do that in the context of. The future master plan. That future master plan is largely in line with the original sketch plan, but there are changes that that are happening and that happened. So we want to make sure that the public restrooms, these other future phases are thought of holistically. So we we want to try to avoid the piecemeal approval of of different pieces, so we're we're. From a policy standpoint, saying phase two, let's get that going. We recommend its approval with these conditions. We want to then say, let's work with the applicant to address these other issues. Prior to moving forward with other other phases, including public restrooms, if that makes any sense.
Makes sense, Norm.
There is, I mean, I I I get it doesn't suffice for a long time, but there are, I know, Porter Johns. In that same area, I know it's not perfect, but there is something there. For the time being, I don't know if anybody's interested in that, but there's something there.
And JJ, do do those. What Gina is referencing, do tho- are those there year round? Are they, how does that work?
Yeah, I believe they are, and I I think in fact they are there to comply with uh earlier agreements with the town to provide. Uh some type of facilities there. In in answer to your question, trustee Nyberg, we're we are. Interested in putting those bathrooms in a- as soon as possible. As as Joseph mentioned. We we've proposed a location to the town, we we submitted preliminary plans, just a schematic design. Understandably, this is a facility that goes on on public property along the riverfront there, and so it's not within our. Ability per se to to allocate this land for that, but we 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 are very interested in in building those bathrooms as soon as possible uh as well. And in in fact. You know, assuming we can move through with phase two here, you know, it's our desire to to push ahead with phase three as as quick as possible. As Joseph mentioned, there's there's some kind of broad things for the entire development that have to be discussed. But, you know, it is it is our our intention to to move ahead and kind of expeditiously including with those bathrooms.
Any other questions for JJ while he's up?
I don't know if it's a question or not directly for JJ, but. I'm not being critical, phase one took a very long, long time. Is. There any way you can have a stipulation on a date that phase two is supposed to be completed? And part of the, part of my response here is as town is developing. Our available water to develop is going down. If you take as long to do phase two as you did phase one, there might not be water for phase three until the. Town can produce more water or purchase more water for availability, so. I'm. I don't know how I'm, where I'm going with that, but. Can we put time limits on a phase?
I, you know, and and I think I I'll I'll answer that and Jeff, you can slap me later. I don't see how you can do that in that respect of just what you experienced in phase one, the housing market died. I mean, through that process, look what the economy did. Once you started, then in the middle of it, the, I mean, basically the economy died, how can you? Force, let's say, a developer to. Build homes when there's nobody to buy the homes. I mean, how, you you see what I'm saying? Bays, the infrastructure, a lot of it's there. That's why you're looking at the areas you're looking at, correct, is is it it can move quicker.
So if I may, to kind of answer both your kind of questions, so. Phase one of South Main has infrastructure in that serves phase one. It also has a good amount of infrastructure that is going to serve. Areas, those holes in the Swiss cheese. Already have infrastructure, already have streets, already have water, already have sewers. So, those are already there for some of those lots. There are new lots like. Along Surf Street by Black Borough. Surf Street isn't built yet, the water line isn't built yet, the sewer line isn't built yet. They won't be able to get a certificate of occupancy for those if those aren't built. So that's pretty easy. We have construction plans, we review that. They don't get a certificate of occupancy when they're building a house until all those things are built to town's specifications. That's fairly self-contained over on that side. Pine Street, they put in a water line in Pine Street that connected all the way over to Bell. That was a major piece of infrastructure that not only helped South Main, but it helped. Areas along Pine Street outside of something, which is part of the reason why we supported that amendment to phase one. Because we got additional water infrastructure for the town to serve other other properties outside of South Main because that water main got installed. The River Park Road has a time limit. By June thirtieth of next year to be done. If it's not, we can withhold building. The twenty twenty four is really to get the. Engineer out there to review the design, to make sure that it was built as designed. And that we're getting as built so that we know what to maintain if the drainage facilities. Somehow get damaged by a storm. They will own and maintain that property. We have the ability to go in there and fix the drainage components if they get damaged. And then we can build it. There are other things like. Alley's and whatnot that they will not be able to get a certificate of occupancy until those are done. Back there, there's a condition on the preliminary plat that basically talks about. The properties of on blocks four, seven and nine. Can't be done until the drainage facilities are installed. So I understand the applicant very much wants to move forward and if the county moves forward, we will work. With them to get those public improvements, but. Until we get phase three done for other areas beyond what is shown tonight. We have to have a big conversation to address the things in the P U D outside of phase two.
Okay, and and Jeff, now I'm going to. Cindy touched on a couple of things, actually, time constraint on construction.
Yeah, so so there there's a a couple of issues I think there are involved here. I think, you know, the first one is is that. We do have deadlines for them to complete the public improvements portion of the development. Because that's typically what we do, if a public improvements agreement you're going to look at next. And it sets deadlines for them completing all the public improvements that we dedicated to the town. Um and so that I think that's June of twenty twenty three, I believe, in the agreement. So it doesn't say that to finish their own houses, they're selling, but it does say anything they're going to do for the town has to be done by this date. We have security for that, but if they don't get it done by then, we can use that security to do it ourselves. We can withhold permits for further development until that's all taken care of. So that's one aspect that's resolved, and then with respect to the water issue. They still have to buy taps to pay a system development fee to basically pay for a tap for each home to get water. And so they don't actually get the right to water service for any particular home until they've actually bought a tap. And if they buy a tap, they got to use it within a year or it expires. And so there is a protection to the town for them just, you know, having. Hundred and fifty or whatever they're going to do moving along. Units or I guess S F Es of water service, like single family home equivalents and water service, that they're going to have to buy a tap. And then they're only going to have a year to use that tap, so. I don't think there's a big issue with the town having to reserve water to serve their development at this stage.
And it's, and if I remember correctly, Jeff, you said, and and the question was asked previously. If we run out of water, we're out of water.
That's true. I mean, you know, ultimately, you're hope- hopefully, your calculations are. That you have enough water in reserve to serve proposed developments that you've approved, but. Really, if they come to buy a tap, you know, five years later and there's not enough water, you can't sell them a tap. And if they buy fifteen taps. You're only having to really be prepared to provide water for those fifteen taps for the year because those will expire in a year. If they don't actually use them. So, you know, developers. Need to be careful buying taps that they can't basically connect and get service for. Um when they're when they're planning their development, and ultimately. There are communities that end up having water shortages and water restrictions, and if there isn't water available, you just you just you just can't provide it, so. That's another, ultimately, that'll be a problem, but hopefully your planning is good enough that you don't have. That many units of development out there waiting for water that you don't have water for, but. Climate conditions can change and and you can you can have issues that you don't expect, but there are a number of safeguards for you. To avoid having a big commitment of water that you can't fulfill.
Thank you, Jeff. Cindy, does that answer your question, or do you?
For the most part, but. Where I was coming from on. Chaffey County, that read port that we get from the building department, there's always. Something in there where. And I don't know, since it's a P U D, it might not have anything to do with it, but. People that have applied for a small subdivision and done whatever, but they haven't proceeded on building on it in so many years. So they. If they decide that they are going to start building on it, they make them redo the paperwork. Do you know what I'm talking about, Mark?
Uh, I think you're referring to the Chaffey County Development Services Report, Dan Swallow does.
Yes, that Dan Swallow does, so that wouldn't have any effect on.
So the majority of his.
P U D.
Is dealing with developments in the county, and he also deals with developments here in town.
Okay, that's where I was getting with the time limit thing.
Our job is to make sure that you and town are have the ability to issue a building. So that is one of the things that Planning and Public Works does is make sure that. It's meeting the zoning requirements, it's meeting the building code, and that we have the ability for water, so. It's not an issue right now per se, and that is why Public Works is proceeding on improvements for. So, town is working on addressing water, and if they meet the water requirements. We will authorize a building permit to be issued by the county.
If if I'm.
The P U D is not under the same guidelines as everybody else, so it couldn't be that. Dan Swallow would say, no, this can't be done because it's so many years old. That's what I'm really asking.
You you are correct on that part.
Okay.
Ed Swallow is going to be reviewing building permits anywhere within Chaffey County. And in part of that review, there's a zoning review that town staff does. We review the P U D for zoning requirements, Dan reviews a building permit for. Construction requirements. It's got about two by fours, it's got a foundation, it's got a roof, it's got windows, it's meeting the energy code. All those kinds of things. So Public Works Department reviews it for water.
Okay.
And so the restrictions that we have are on public improvements, streets, curb gutter, that kind of thing. But we, now, once they pull a permit, there is a restriction on time.
Okay.
But just that they're proposing does not restrict time. When it comes to building a physical building, the only thing that's that they are deadline to is public improvements. And that's what Jeff was saying. Is that correct, Jeff?
That's right.
Okay, so.
Yeah, if I might kind of respond to your your general question, you know, your characterization that. It taking a long time, I mean, that's not being critical, that's just that's just the reality, right? It's it has taken a very long time. And, you know, I think that's for a variety of reasons. Uh, one, it was a a much larger phase and kind of a different time. Uh, but two, probably more importantly, uh, South Main as a company was kind of just like in its infancy, right? It had a big idea and, you know, a a nice picture on the wall and. You know, we were just getting started. We were just kind of like.
It takes a lot to make it happen.
It takes a lot to get it going. It's taken us, you know, whatever, fifteen years to go from first gear up to like, you know, fourth gear or whatever. And and now, um, I think, you know, the the market is is more. Ready for it. The the things that we're doing, we don't have to point to a picture, we can say we're doing, this is what we're doing, and so. You know, I think we're we're just much better positioned to both A, we sell lots. And and B, actually execute on these public improvements to which we are, you know, kind of committed. So, uh, believe me, you know, like I said, we're we're. We're eager to get into to phase three as soon as we can. I mean, it's not always, it's not always good times for development and that's a great time, so we're absolutely. Uh, committed to moving that ahead.
Other clarifying questions for staff or the applicant?
Is phase one complete?
I have I have one piece, one thirty foot chunk of sidewalk that is about to be completed outside of a home.
And then it'll be a hundred percent done.
The the public improvements will be complete. They're working on building permits for vacant lots that are left.
Okay, any other clarifying questions for? Staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you, JJ. If you want to have a chair, we'll call you back if we need you. Um, I opened this portion of the public hearing for public comment. Philip will look there. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment? And I remind you, you can, if you're on your phone, you can press star nine if you would like to speak. Or on Zoom, raise your hand. Nothing?
Not saying anything.
Okay, I don't see anything, so we close this portion of the public hearing for public comment. Um, any, before I close this portion of the public hearing, is there any other clarifying questions for staff? Or the applicant?
Mayor, I just would remind you, there are two resolutions, one for the preliminary plat and one for the public improvements. Okay, so we would ask for two separate motions.
Got you. I collect this portion for. I collect this portion for uh, discussion with the applicant and staff. Are there any? Thoughts, trustees amongst yourselves, comments? I mean, I've heard some that I hope were answered, Norm's comment, Libby's. Cindy, I think, Dave, I think yours were clarified. Yes, Libby?
No, that that there there are always issues that come up with this, but it's a beautiful project. You know, just over time, it's it's really nice to have the the uh, different part of Buena Vista as the new urbanism.
Thank you.
I can remember, and it was in this room, and gosh, I don't even know how many years ago. Well, it was actually when the economy was diving. And uh, it was state officials were here. And they said how lucky Buena Vista was to have that development going on at that point in time. And at that point in time, that's pretty much all there was going on. It really was. So, you know, it's it's hard to. Uh, you know, we talked about the best of bright states and stuff like that. Um, yeah, we could do a lot of things, but is it in the best interest of the town? And I think that's really the way we have to look at all of this is what's best interest of the town? Just like you say. Quite an achievement. Any other comments? Uh, we do have two resolutions on the table. We'll address one num- uh, number one first, uh, number fifty four, twenty twenty one. The resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, approving the preliminary plat for phase two South Main Plan Unit. Is that one with the conditions?
Yes, fifty four has the twelve conditions that I talked about in my presentation.
Yes, thank you. Um, just by approving that, Jeff, that would include those conditions, correct? Or do we have to, do we have to state that?
They they're they're referenced in the resolution.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, deny?
I'll make a motion.
I heard I stereo and it was. Okay, we have a motion switcher. Second, Chris.
All right.
Okay, uh, further discussion? Can I have real call vote, please?
Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Lecretzi.
Yes.
Mr. Nyberg.
Yes.
Mr. Row.
Yes.
Mr. Swisher.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next is a resolution number fifty five. Twenty twenty one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, approving the public improvement agreement with the town company LLC for the property known as Phase Two South Main P U D, Buena Vista, Colorado. And is everybody clear on the difference between the two? Okay, thank you. Would I entertain a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second thing, further discussion?
And this is the revised word, South Main Building Company, not Town Company.
Correct. This should be resolution fifty five. She referenced South Main Building Company as part of the public improvements agreement. And that public improvements agreement, just as that's why I did get in my presentation, it's hundred ninety one thousand dollars.
And that was, uh, I believe everybody should have gotten that email from Paula with the updated.
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? So I would make that motion as amended. By the updated packet, is that correct? Because it did change name and amount. Yeah, so it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
The from what I said, it would be amended because it would not be that resolution there. It would be the other one.
With the reference to South.
Almost, yeah, that's not on my gift, so. It would still be resolution number fifty four.
Correct.
Fifty fifty five. Let's go back. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and is that agreed upon by the motioner in the? Second.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Lecretzi.
Yes.
Mr. Nyberg.
Yes.
Mr. Row.
Yes.
Mr. Swisher.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, J J.
Appreciate your time.
Next is a, gosh, going right down the line here. We'll jump right into garden.
About fifteen minutes.
I I made a suggestion.
You did well. You did well. No, it needed discussed. Thank you all very much. It was a good discussion. Uh, next item is a guard garbage nuisance and protection of wildlife ordinance. Uh, ordinance number seventeen. Amending chapter seven of Buena Vista Municipal Code to add new article two concerning garbage and the protection of wildlife to amend sections. Two dash ninety nine A to establish an assessment for related violations. Um, do we have Grant or are you running with this one?
We should have Grant on.
I am here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. We're here to wrap up the conversation that we started a couple of months ago regarding trash and bears, which went into a larger look at how we view trash and animals. In our town, uh, we worked with legal to bring before you what you see tonight. Uh, what we've done is added a new section to chapter seven. Um, it's intended to address waste as well as how we. Um, interact with animals as a town. Um, real quick overview, just because I know tonight's a long meeting, I'll go over it real quick. And then if you have any questions, we'll dig into more detail. Um, basically, we're adding seven fifty three, which embraces the nature of the conversation we had, saying that if any trash becomes litter, that becomes a nuisance. Um, fifty four, fifty five, and fifty six all discuss how. We tighten up special events, construction and commercial trash, trash. Um, and how we view those. Basically, it's in the same as fifty three, just specifically calling out those three entities. Um, fifty seven is kind of a change, but it goes in context with what the state views as feeding wildlife. Um, like I said, this follows state law. What it does is it helps municipal enforcement um, take care of these problems. So it's not always up to the state enforcement official to address these issues. Um, A and B are what follow more of state law and C is um. Talks about bird feeders being suspended in the way that they can't become a nuisance to those animals. So you're basically bird feeder won't be a bear feeder or deer feeders, how those are looked. Um, and seven fifty eight ensures that all cans are operable. Um, and then the main thing to pay attention to, section two of this ordinance. Does make all of this a penalty assessment in the fee schedule. And we would be looking at this being a graduated fine of fifty, one fifty, and three hundred on the nature of the violation. So your first time would be fifty, second one fifty, third violation would be three hundred. And of course, anytime in there, we could just write a summons into court. Are there any questions on this?
Questions for? Comments? Thank you, Grant. Um.
I have a comment on bird feeders. I think it'll be hard for people to to uh, get around to doing that. But we might be able to encourage Boy Scouts or someone like that to take it on as a project. Go around and help people hang their bird feeders properly.
And that's a good comment. Um, also something. And obviously, it's going to depend on the person, but even if you were to. Uh, an illustration of some kind. Don't, you know. Don't hang it to side of the house on the deck or something. I mean, obviously, everybody does that. So it's like, okay, I think it, I think that one is going to be in the hands of code enforcement to. Figure out. It's gonna be education.
Education, the way that I've talked to Kevin Mather with Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the way they view it, because they have a very similar rule. Is really looking at the amount of bird seed below the bird feeder. Um, if we're seeing five to ten pounds of bird feed below the bird feeder, then obviously we have a problem where we're feeding wildlife. If it's someone that can't get it elevated, but we're not seeing a problem there, that's something you either we can have a conversation with or an understanding with. Um, this is just, the ordinance is just a guideline to make sure that there is fairness throughout.
More or less making them aware of the situation.
Correct.
Thank you. That makes sense, Libby. Okay, any other questions for Grant? We have a ordinance in front of us. I would entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion that uh, we adopt ordinance seventeen as presented.
Second.
Second, was that you?
No.
I know, I'm looking the wrong way. Next time we put up the name tags, put Norm in between them, so it separates them out a little bit or something. I don't know. Uh, motion and second on the table for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you, Grant, for your time and effort.
Thank you, Bourne. Thank you, Mayor.
Good job.
Next item. This is gonna take ten minutes. I know it is.
What did I put on there?
Fifteen. Well, they got a chuckle. Uh, this is a water treatment project update and next steps. Uh, resolution in front of us, resolution Town of Buena Vista entering into agreement with J V A Co. Cons- Consulting Engineers Incorporated for the Town of Buena Vista Water Treatment Plant Expansion. Thirty percent design and. You'll have to explain that to me, Philip C Mar, C M A R Procurement Engineering Services. Oh, that's the name of the company. Is it?
It's Construction Manager at Risk.
Thank you. Somebody suggested one time writing out abbreviations so we knew what they actually meant. That was, I don't know, ten years ago. It wasn't me. No, it wasn't me. I just played along like I knew. Didn't work.
Philip. Oh, yes, Sean, Sean will uh, take us through this.
Yeah, I apologize for that initialism, Mayor. Um, um, thanks, everyone. Um, um, I'll um. Yeah, I'll uh, let me see if I can gear up for this. Um, so, yeah, yeah, here we are. So anyways. You know, what we're wanting to do is continue working with J V A, uh, supporting the preliminary design report that was produced for town. With an agreement that captures moving forward with the gallery expansion portion. Design um, for construction with uh, with treatment method that supports um, uh, both surface water and and groundwater to. Utilize the town's current full water rights. And so um, uh, J V A presented a cost estimate, uh, letter agreement that will need to be modified. But we have the cost estimate in the resolution. Uh, but um, um, really what we're wanting to do at this point, just to, just for clarity, is to, is to kind of hold off on the. Spending the money on the engineering and the design for the surface water and focus. Uh, primarily on the gallery expansion portion of the project with uh, with the treatment method. Um, so um, I wanna kind of. Talk about the details a little bit for the school services for thirty percent design. Um, that should help us to stay on pace and should ensure that the the design efforts um, meet the needs of the project. So we're not designing something that we we may not build. So we're really trying to focus on what are, what are um. Immediate needs and our and our known um, efforts should be applied to um, versus versus that full scope of that uh, preliminary design report. Um, the um. C Mar Construction Manager at Risk bid documents, you know, would include plans and specifications assisting in the procurement for the the C Mar. And the scope of services um, based um, primarily again on the preliminary design report portions of it. Um, and uh, really what we want to do is supply high quality water to the town. Um, have reliable and redundant water supply to our treatment system and uh, maintain uh. Um, reasonable levels of certifications for our water operators to and uh, limit maintenance and capital costs. Um, I'll um, I'll talk about the overview just, just briefly. I think we have, we all know where we're here. So J V A, you know, did recently complete the preliminary design report uh, phase of the water shooting the plant expansion project. And um, you know, we had asked them to look at both surface and and gallery groundwater sources. And so we really collected as much information regarding both of those water sources. That um, both are connect to the utilizing the town's um, current and full water rights. Um, the presuming preliminary design report was presented through the public meetings again to the Water Advisory Board and Board of Trustees. And uh, you know, had alternate methods of treatments and cost estimates, um, pretty, pretty, pretty uh, wide range of of investment um, and design. Um, um, engineering efforts as well. Um, I'll talk a little bit about um, C Mar before I get into the analysis and. And it's something new to me, too. I've I've never participated in a, in a C Mar uh, um, construction uh, delivery method. Um, usually, it's just been. And and. This, it's a fairly um, recognized um, opportunity to, to have a delivery method for uh, construction. Which uh, kind of commits the construction manager to deliver the project within a guaranteed maximum price. Um, it's um, kind of a, have an at at risk, cost effective and time. Uh, alternative to traditional design, bid build, design processes. Um, the one benefit to it is it kind of limits um, the risk of of um, extra work orders. And uh, adverse relationships, I guess you could say. Um, but you know, along with any, along with traditional delivery methods. Um, would include construction drawings and um, um, in the in the typical approach to, to the project. Um, oh, cool. So um, jumping down to the analysis, um, you know, we we recognize. Um. The strong efforts that right water provided in the Water Resource Master Plan and some of the things as a a water operator and a long term. Um, water operator for the town, you know, we've we've seen, you know, what what's happening here as well with the developments. And we've, we have a pretty intimate perspective on the current, you know, system that we're providing. Uh, water to the town with and um, looking, you know, uh, ways to uh, improve that and and again, get get our, get our water rights into our system. Um, you know, the um, you know, the J V A report along with a master plan, both kind of identify. Um, ways and and the need to to expand, so um, including both surface and gallery. So um, you know, the staff along with the Water Advisory Board really recommend focusing. First on on the infiltration gallery design and construction and providing a treatment method if it's needed, which probably likely is. Um, the gravity membrane treatment. And if uh, if we move forward with that design in the future, if we need to and, or if we have to. Um, we would be able to treat surface water with that treatment method. So um, the uh, gravity membrane is is really designed for surface water. Um, it would really optimize our, our groundwater source in in, if there was ever a chance we were classified as. Under the influence of surface water with our, with our groundwater source. Um. As far as scope goes, you know, J V A, you know, plans to uh, complete the design in in several phases. Um, pretty, pretty common there. Everything's kind of, kind of drowned, drawn up there in that section. Um, kind of identifies a little bit more information on the C Mar procurement and uh, how it um, how it will uh, you know, solicitate. For competitive bids, qualified contractors. Um, we have a a really good opportunity to get back in um. Um, a good relationship with the Hemingway Groundwater Engineering, get the uh, uh, groundwater study for us in. Twenty twenty. And uh, so that um, would be a pretty strong team with uh, with a lot of uh. Um, time on the water, so to speak. Um, a lot of, a lot of people that are really good at what they do involved in that project. Um, uh, kind of broke down the cost and budget to kind of show you where we landed at that two seventy eight. I, I do think that that um, thirty percent design for a hundred eighty nine actually is more like a forty to fifty percent design. But um, contingency and everything involved, so kind of landed at that. Um, added a few bullet points there to kind of talk about, you know, what we have in the capital fund balance for uh, twenty twenty two. Um, we dropped in um, um, a couple of million, just in case there's an opportunity that uh, that we might be able to begin, you know, gallery construction in twenty twenty two. So if we're lucky, we might be able to break ground in the fall. We'll see. if we're lucky, we might be able to break ground in the fall, we'll see how it goes, we have a lot of design work to do and a lot of work to do with CDPHG before we get to that point. Engineering probable cost for the intrusion gallery with the gravity membrane, you know, I think the six is probably on the low end, but there's some opportunities there depending on how the water quality review goes with the state and, you know, probably some opportunities to, to have some grant funding to help us with that project as well and speaking of grants and, and funding opportunities, you just identified that CWCB Colorado Department of Conservation Board and we're all familiar with DOLA and CDPHG, so that's kind of where we're at right now with with the grants and the loan status, we haven't applied for anything with, with DOLA. We might have an opportunity to do that in the fall. We'll have a better idea of where we stand with the grant that we submitted on December first to CWCB probably late first quarter of twenty twenty two, early second quarter of twenty twenty two. And then the PNA has been submitted, the project needs assessment to CDPHG and so we'll be looking to see in the coming months probably how we, how we land with our, with our loan opportunities through that program. So, yeah, just to kind of follow up on the BOT action, I just kind of want to focus, you know, really we, we should really be focusing first on the gallery expansion, I mean, that's our high quality water. The Hemingway Report really identifies there's an opportunity to capture our, our full water rights through that system. And I think we should definitely look at that first and, and, you know, we would be providing some redundancy and you know, with gravity membrane design that really sets us up for, you know, possible future needs or maybe we we, we missed the mark on the gallery capabilities to, to provide our, our water rights, but more than likely we're not, I think what we're, what we're looking at is a really safe kind of armored up, armored up water source that, you know, combined with the current gallery infiltration system that we're utilizing now does provide some redundancy. But, yeah. How'd I do?
You're great, it's intense.
Thanks, Sean. I guess I'll just interject, it was nice to be able to have the to go out and see the water treatment.
Yeah, that's great.
It makes a lot of this make sense when you start talking about it, otherwise you're just kind of going, sure. Whatever you say, Sean, we're, you know what I mean?
Water good.
Yeah. Questions?
So, this two hundred seventy eight thousand essentially, so this is in addition to the sixty eight million we'd be crossing in for the
Yeah, yeah, so this is really the two seventy eight is, is really in that, kind of in that funding table there. And, you know, you can break it down there, so we have about a hundred eighty nine in design and that's for, you know, both the treatment method and the gallery expansion. And then, you know, we have, the HGE is the Hemingway cost analysis for, for those guys to help us with the gallery expansion, that's really what they specialize in. And that's why we brought him in to do the groundwater analysis last year, it's, it's what they do. Courtney Hemingway has worked with Wright Water, has worked with Wright Water and so there's a pretty good connective relationship with, with Trish Flood and her team as well too and yeah, and then we have survey and obviously we got to get to our parcel and we need to stick everything out. You know, we, we have that decree that allows us to, to have a, an infiltration gallery and language is definitely identified, you know, and that's something for, you know, Cynthia and Trish to probably talk more about, we've, we've evaluated, you know, the gallery expansion opportunity and that's kind of why we're here, that's why we did all this, so we definitely had some sounding board opportunities and making sure that talking to Wright Water so we don't step in it and, yeah, anyways, but I think the big thing on the surveying is just to make, get our parcel state that, you know, survey the location where the gallery expansion is going to be, survey the location where the new crossings is going to be and get that all squared away through that and then some geotechnical engineering efforts and, you know, start initiating the electrical controls and the, the engineering for the electrical components and, and the, uh, pretty I think we have pretty much the C Mar procurement nailed down with the nine thousand five. So that's, that's kind of where we landed there, I hope that, I hope that explains things.
I think, just as, I think, if I can explain the, the kind of the combination of numbers here, so we're looking at a total project cost, everything including this phase of six to eight million, right, so the, in the filtration is really the unknown number that creates that gap. The subset of the project that we're moving forward in earnest is this two point four seven eight, which is the two hundred and seventy eight five plus two point two million for the gallery expansion, infiltration gallery expansion. So that's what we're moving for, Sean submitted their C W C grant, C W C B grant for the two point two million and there, and that grant is asking for fifty percent of that two point two, so one point one hopefully will be covered by a grant, the other one point one, we would be looking to probably finance through a loan.
Gotcha, and that's, I mean, it's all, it's all gravy, right, it's all good, but the, the reason why I'm just bringing up is because I'm thinking about the opposite end of it, the essential outflow of some of this and I know, I think it's the sanitation group, I believe, so I know there'll be costs along with improving those things and so I'm just trying to be mindful of expenditures and what's going where and how much we'll have left over to deal effects, I know we haven't had that conversation yet, I don't believe, I think that's scheduled for next year.
And we're not responsible for the sanitation expenses.
So, oh, so the town
No obligation, that's BB Sanitation District.
They're standalone.
Okay.
Their own entity.
All right, well, that's
I'm like, one thing we don't have to worry about paying for.
Okay.
I would say, yeah, I would say though, you know, what we do know is that, you know, staff has talked with sanitation district staff as well and, you know, we talk about getting all of our full water rights into the system and you know, letting them know that, you know, the, you know, final you know, what we're, what we're talking about is another, you know, roughly integrants, being able to produce basically doubling our, our ability currently and, you know, letting them know that, you know, they're, they're under some, you know, CDPHG requirements and guidelines too and the one thing that they fall under is like, you know, when they meet like eighty percent capacity, which I believe right now they're at about fifty, so, you know, they would probably likely start happy to expand their, their treatment plant, so you know, we're, we're making sure that, you know, we're, we're talking to them about it as we move forward with this. We're definitely going to share with, with them our, you know, Wright Water and Swift Water and our Water Advisory Board and our staff has done a pretty good job of the last, you know, three, three years or so kind of projecting these growth trends and, you know, I think, I think sanitation districts identifying their own trends, but I think we can probably provide them some of the information that we've had to maybe help them be out in front of, you know, our growth as well, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, that's
And then that, basically the twenty twenty two water treatment plant expansion project, that's a statement more or less is the capital improvement. That's what's in the budget.
That's what's in the budget, right?
That's what's in the budget, thank you.
Does the two point four seven eight million two project it does allow for redundancy if needed?
Yeah, so we have a couple options for redundancy and the one that we're going to target first is, see within the gallery, so we would be putting a completely separate system in to pair with the current system, so two separate crossings to two different locations. The, the, this, this future phase, we're, we're talking about putting it deeper within, you know, our water rights and within our decree course, but and so it would probably be about, I don't know, roughly, you know, ten to fifteen foot deeper than what the current system's in, so, and at a different location. The other thing that kind of helps us prepare for, for development is if you know, there's, there's still a little bit unknowns and that's kind of why we don't want to, you know, wanted to, you know, just make sure that we're not engineering or spending money for design that, that we don't build. You know, as we move forward on this, you know, we really want to focus primarily on the gallery expansion with some not complete engineering for the treatment method, but the treatment method that we're proposing provides us a treatment opportunity for our surface water in the future if we need it.
Plus any other kind of contamination we could possibly face, because our, our groundwater is great. That doesn't mean something couldn't happen to it.
Right.
True. Good point.
We also, in the twenty twenty two budget in terms of redundancy during this time, there, there's the well three expansion to be able to serve potable water. So if we start peaking during this time while we're still trying to expand infiltration gallery, we can utilize well number three during those times.
Any other questions? I did notice that this was also tied into the ice skating rink. I just had to say that. Just to see if anybody's paying attention. I'm sorry, Philip, I had to go there. Never mind. He was gonna make a note, ice skating rink.
That's ready.
Well, you know, it's the last meeting of the year. And I don't know what that has to do with it. Okay, so we have a, a resolution in front of us to enter into an agreement with JBA. Resolution number sixty one. I believe Sean did a good job of attending. Everybody understands, questions were answered. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution sixty one.
Thank you.
Second.
Secondly, Crezzi, got you this time. It was an echo. Further discussion. We'll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee McCready.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Switzer.
Yes.
Trustee Boebel.
Yes.
Great. It's gonna be good to start moving forward on this water, real good, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing, I open this public hearing. The board will hold the hearing on the twenty twenty two proposed budget, discuss budget requests. That would be Michelle. Okay, Phil.
Put your name on it.
You put my name on this.
Okay, that goes right with the ice skating.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, my memo is on page one thirty four of the packet. And under the analysis is what the expected unrestricted fund balances will be at the end of twenty twenty two. To kind of go through the packet in kind of a funny order here. So, the twenty twenty one fund balances are projected as of the budget. Now, there are a few things that are not going to be completed as of the budget, as of the end of the year. The inter-fund transfers on page one thirty seven is what, what I'm talking about. Inter-fund transfers haven't been done yet. And that, I've been saving those to the end of the year mostly because sometimes we don't need all that money transferred and I'd rather not transfer than adjust the budget to show that it wasn't transferred, so that's the thing that hasn't been done. These are budget numbers for twenty twenty one as of the end of the year, so this is still what we expect, the far right unrestricted fund balance is still what we, what we expect to have at the end of twenty twenty one. If you scroll down to page one thirty eight with, with the blue heading, we're starting with the projected ending fund balances, which was kind of in the middle of the page above. Not at the far right, but we're, we're starting with those, even though they're unaudited, they're the best guess that we have. And so we're starting with those and if you go all the way across and after table reserve and twenty seven percent emergency fund reserve and what's been restricted for debt service and evidence and all that fun stuff, we're still have a pretty decent set of fund balances at the end of twenty twenty two. The next oh, I don't know gazillion pages are the fee schedule and then I had to add my budget. So that's another gazillion pages. And then we come to the mill levy calculation of one sixty eight. The gross assessed valuation jumped by twenty million this year from seventy three to ninety. So, that is just an indicator there that that is what's going on in the valley, so that, that is, but that ninety million, that's Univista. And the, the calculation, that's ugly, so we don't want to look at that. If we go to page one seventy in the packet, I'm going to bring you guys along kicking and screaming and I'm going to explain this budget resolution. When you scroll down a little bit and the first section is the estimated expenditures. So we have the general fund, the all hazard, the water and the capital improvement, those are the big boys in the, in the budget this year. The budget almost doubled this year from ten million, just about eleven million to twenty million this year and these two guys, the Water Fund Capital Improvement Fund are the reason. Water Fund, it has to do with the expansion project and the capital improvement. Improvement Fund is largely the police fund, the police filming project. And so you kind of look and you see, you scroll down and there are all the other expenditures and then we we see the twenty million as the total expenditures, including the transfers to other funds. And then section two is the revenues and as expected, the water fund revenues and the capital fund revenues kind of mirror the, the expenses. That's on purpose because we have to pay for it somehow, so those revenues include loan funding, that, fund, loan funds and grant funds and other C O P funds, any, any way that we pay for it, that's included in the revenues. If you scroll down a little bit farther, total revenues, all funds nineteen million, all inter-fund transfers, one million, the sources of fund balance, that negative number, that's an, actually an increase to all fund balances, even though it's negative, because we're removing that from revenues to balance to the expenditures, so we're removing that from revenues and putting that in fund balance. So that's a net increase to all our fund balances, even though they kind of, they kind of all go So that's a net increase to all our fund balances, even though they kind of, they kind of all go come and go, they yeah, overall, we're still adding to fund balance. And then there's the appropriation resolution, which is number fifty-eight oh one seventy-three, that just covers expenditures, because we're just appropriating expenditures, you can't appropriate revenues as much as we'd like. And then, and then passing the middle. So that is budget one oh one in a nutshell. Philip, did you have anything to add to it?
I think the only thing I want to emphasize, it's the change from our previous meeting really has to do with the water fund.
Is the memo.
It's in the memo?
It's not.
Oh, it's not in the memo. So let me just speak to that very briefly, because I think it's important. We had a placeholder in our water fund during this budget cycle about the water expansion project, and I think we had estimated, I think we'd put in like six million dollars with some grant funding and then spending down fund balance. The, the plan that you all approved tonight, the direction for, for Sean and team actually keeps our water fund balanced, because we're not spending down in the fund balance. We're not biting off the whole project in one year.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. So we're doing a subset of the project. We are, we've applied for a fifty percent grant that we're very hopeful of, sounds very promising. And we would like to propose, and the budget is proposed, that we finance the balance, the one point one million. The main reason being is you can borrow money to build things, you really can't borrow money to buy water rights. And so our strategy is to preserve cash balance towards water rights when we have those opportunities. But the cash balance is there, just in case we need to supplement. And I promise Sean, I would also remind the board that the ARPA funding is also available to us if we need to fill any of those holes in the water pipe. That's bad. But the ARPA funding is a great resource that we can hold on to, and if something doesn't come through with any of the grants that we're planning on, or we want to, again, preserve our cash balance, we can utilize that funding if need be. So that's the big change on the water fund side, water fund side. Otherwise, Michelle, I think, highlighted in her memo, we captured the latest sales tax actuals from this year. So our, our general fund looks very healthy. It's projecting a nice surplus, I think roughly a hundred thousand dollars. We like that buffer. It gives the board flexibility as to get into the year if there's project opportunities or other things going on to be considered. So that's all I have to add, to add, Michelle.
Could you tell us about how much is in the unallocated ARPA funds?
I think the total is six hundred and sixty. Six hundred and sixty, we received half of them. Three thirty.
Three thirty in twenty twenty-two. So we have six sixty, and we'll get another three thirty?
No.
We got three thirty this year. And we'll get another three thirty in twenty twenty-two. Okay.
So we, we have not spent any of that money, or we haven't allocated any expenditures yet.
And you're projecting a hundred thousand over the, the budget that you're presenting at this point in time with the, if the sales tax continues to be a percentage above right now, okay?
Three percent growth over this year is our revenue projection, which typically exceed that.
Yep. Other comments, questions?
I asked you about the all-hazard fund, either a prognosis thereof, or the, the, if we, if we don't, if that fund goes away, is our budget still stand? Who didn't realize that was so significant?
Appreciate the question. That was a surprise we received a couple of weeks ago, that our all-hazard fund is in jeopardy of not, of us not being able to run that program as we had planned. There is a substantial transfer from that fund to our general fund to offset our costs for fire services, with Chafee Fire, that was our strategy. We have not been able to make any progress changing any minds about our standalone program. I have approached Chafee Fire and Chafee County about potentially partnering with them to roll our program into their organization. I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm over fifty percent confident that that's gonna be a solution, but it's worthwhile to explore. If we have to shut down that program, it will not change our twenty twenty-two budget. The, the monies that we are showing to transfer have already been built up in that all-hazard fund. So no change to twenty twenty-two. But obviously, starting in twenty twenty-three, it changes our, our outlook a bit. However, I think that we have twenty twenty-two still has a partial sales tax rebate for the waterline expansion for true value. That will be fully off the books in twenty twenty-three. Hopefully, our, our marijuana licenses actually turn into businesses that produce the revenue that, uh, uh, normal sales tax revenue and five percent special sales tax revenue to the town. And we also have our, our normal sales tax growth. So I'm pretty optimistic that even if we did lose that program, which we don't want to do, by the time we get to planning for twenty twenty-three, we will still have a very sound general fund balance budget with our current staffing and capital plan.
Other questions? I would like to, and obviously, that kind of hampers or dampens what I wanted to propose, and, and it wouldn't be, it's more planting the seed to the board that I believe the town should budget annually for a new employee of some substantial amount. With the growth that we're experiencing, I think every, whether it be in planning, administrative, public works, the growth is crazy, and I think that should be something that should be planned every year to bring onboard somebody. We're always short in the, uh, let's say, the upkeep and the grounds keep that part of it, but I think in the administrative side, it's a major impact when you can bring somebody in that will really impact time, whether, like I say, it doesn't matter whether it's at finance, doesn't matter. And I think the board should consider that annually, putting something like that into the budget. It makes, I mean, just looking at what we've done the past few years major as to what it's done for this town and the staff major. So I don't think you can calculate how much that actually, how that actually pans out. So it's something that we could look at. Obviously, you won't know. But if we, let's say, sales tax even exceeds our projected, it's always an amendment, but it's something that I, I think we should give the go-ahead to, to our administrator. Look at that and always keep that door open. Staffing is always tough. Any other questions on budget? We have we want to address them in order. Item E, resolution number fifty-six, series twenty twenty-one. A resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Univista, Colorado, adopting the Town of Univista twenty twenty B schedule.
Public comment.
Yes.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public. I'm ready to move. I know it's nine thirty. No, it's all right. I opened this portion of the meeting to public comment. I remind anyone, you can raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are on by telephone. We will recognize you and let you speak. Nobody out there, I close this portion of public comment. Any other clarifying questions for staff? Got to go through the motions now. Hearing none, I close the portion of the public hearing. Comments amongst trustees? It always amazes me how well our staff takes care of this for us, if I can say.
Easiest it's ever been.
Makes our job so much easier on this side of the table. Okay, so now I will entertain a motion. Resolution number fifty-six, series twenty twenty-one, adopting the twenty twenty-two fee schedule.
I'll make that motion to adopt resolution fifty-six, series twenty twenty-one.
For second. Second row, further discussion. We'll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item is resolution number fifty-seven, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Univista, Colorado, summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the Town of Univista, Colorado for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-two and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve. Resolution number fifty-seven.
I'll second that.
Second, Fay. Further discussion. We'll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item is resolution number fifty-eight, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Univista, Colorado, appropriating the sun's money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts for the proposed, for the proposals.
Proposals.
Proposed, proposed as per, never mind. For the Town of Univista, Colorado, it's in print. Got it? For the budget year twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
You sure?
Resolution fifty-eight, series twenty twenty-one. Second.
Secondly, Creasy. Further discussion. We'll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item is resolution number fifty-nine, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Univista, Colorado, levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-one to help defray the cost of government for the Town of Univista, Colorado for the twenty twenty-two budget year.
I'll make that motion to approve the adoption of resolution number fifty-nine, series twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
For second.
Second row. Further discussion. We'll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yep.
Thank you all very much, and I don't think you all mind, we'll just go right through the three-mile plan if you want to approve the resolution. Sorry, Mark, I was just gonna roll over you, man. Thank you all very much, and thank you, staff, for your time.
Yeah.
Big difference, big difference. Next item is the three-mile plan. Should the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of resolution number sixty, series twenty twenty-one, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Univista, Colorado? Not being in eighty.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the twenty twenty annual update of the town of Univista, three-mile plan. For those who've been on the board for a while, know that we do a three-mile plan every year as required by state statutes, but I know we have some new members, so we're gonna kind of roll through this, but we're fast. Three-mile plan is a requirement of the state statutes, is relates to municipal annexations. So this is a plan that we are required to put in place for guidance when we annex property into town. We have put together the Town of Univista three-mile plan for twenty twenty-one, just to cover pretty much no change from last year, with the exception of adding area eleven, which is, we're calling the Chicago Rancher. So this is a new area that we are adding in because of the planning efforts going on with the Chicago Ranch and the rodeo grounds that wasn't covered in twenty twenty. So on the screen for you, you'll see in light blue, that's the Chicago Ranch. They're working on that planning effort of the Chicago Ranch and the rodeo grounds, which is already in town limits. So it's not on there, but the Chicago Ranch portion, we have identified as area eleven and put together some planning efforts as it relates to that. So that's the major change from twenty twenty. Kind of going through this really quick. State statute say you can't annex more than three miles from your municipal boundary in any one calendar year. And so that's why it's called a three-part plan. So that area is identified on this map in the pink. The town is shown in blue, the current town limits. We've also done some efforts with regards to who owns what in that three-mile area. So you'll see here in white green slash yellow, that is Bureau of Land Management, B L M. Then you'll see light green, Marius down south, that's state of Colorado, and dark green is four steps, trying to give you an idea of what's within our three-mile limits. And then we put together our areas of desired growth, no change to areas one through ten, and the addition of area eleven for the Chicago Ranch. Then we put our municipal services area. This gets into where we think we can get infrastructure sooner than later, easier. There's no change of this map from twenty twenty. And then we also included the two thousand four transportation master plan. I wish I had the original copy to give to you, but this is our, our G I S department, Doug, put this map together because that, that plan is so old, even the consultants who did it don't have it digitally. So on the two thousand four transportation master plan, we have accomplished a good number of those efforts, and probably the next thing you'll be seeing is some discussions with regards to the highway at Baylor Steel that we've been working on. So we are still working on this, but this is one of those plans that in the future, I think we probably ought to get a new version of. With that, I will shut and ask questions from the board. If you have to answer.
Trustees. Questions? Clarification for whomever might be listening, this does not imply that the town is planning on reaching out in that three-mile plan and doing anything at this point in time. That is just a statutory requirement. Obviously, we have water issues to deal with long before we look at annexing or pulling anything into the town area.
And by and large, annexations, for the most part, have to be initiated by the property owner. So it has to be in agreement, both parties. There is one slight provision that says if you surround a property for a period of three years, you can't force an annexation. We have one of those situations, the house, and I believe it's carpet store next to Clearview Church is actually in the county. We have no desire to annex that at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
So we have, we talked to a telt horse at one point about annexing a property out there. And we are able to skip around West Winds. Is that right?
Black.
Are we not, why would we not take in West Wings, West Winds?
Why would we not?
Yeah.
Well, there's a multitude of reasons why we may or may not annex someone. Have to do with the cost of services, the, the revenue of properties being annexed, the provision of infrastructure. So if they have a private water system, we are providing public water, then we have to make sure that the water system is capable of carrying our water and our pressures to meet those requirements. So it, you know, may come down to if their system isn't up to the town system, is the town interested in spending money? Put in a water system to meet the town's requirements. Getting tax revenue from residential. Lot of communities in the state of Colorado annex land because they are going after sales tax revenue. You don't get sales tax revenue off of residential.
Right.
And in Colorado, residential is taxed at a different rate, approximately one-third of that of, of commercial. So I'm not saying that we wouldn't look at it, but we would evaluate it. So I'm not saying that we wouldn't look at it, but we would evaluate it and see what our costs and opportunities are of any annexation on any property.
And I might, I might just add too that, as Mark already mentioned, annexations are an initiation of a landowner. So folks in West Wind would have to petition to annex. It's not like we can go to them and say, you need to annex. So I think any annexation that we look at is, is almost always a desire of that landowner to become a part of the town. And the town has an opportunity to say, is this in the best interest of town or not? Should West Winds desire to do that, we would, as Mark mentioned, assess that in its own merits, but we would not go to them and say, you need to annex.
Thank you.
Reminds me of the small towns presentation.
Yeah, like, why would we want to?
Yeah, you have to really consider a lot of those things with infrastructure and stuff like that. It makes a lot of sense. Any other questions for Mark? Clarifying questions?
Very quick comment, just to tie it back to, it's, it's the, as Mark mentioned, state, state requirement to do this. Since Mark's been here, he's done great keeping us diligent about doing this. The areas of desired growth and municipal services area are things that we've added that align with our I G A with the county specifically too. So it plays into our ongoing agreement with the county and how we plan together with them. So we'll be initiating those conversations with regards to our I G A with county as it relates to planning by getting our planning commissions to start talking to each other. That's one of the things we try to get. But the county was extremely busy working on its comprehensive plan and is gearing up to do its line use code rewrite. We have that initially set for the spring of twenty-two.
Which is long overdue.
Well, it took us twelve years to get that I G A.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve or deny Resolution Number Sixty, adopting the updated Three Mile Plan.
Come motion to approve.
Thank you.
I do.
Second Nyberg. Further discussion? Vote, call vote, please.
Rusty Pay.
Yes.
Rusty Lucrezzi.
Yes.
Rusty Nyberg.
Yes.
Rusty Row.
Yes.
Rusty Swisher.
Yes.
Rusty Vol.
Yes. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Mark, for keeping us on the straight and narrow.
Thank you.
Trustee staff interaction. I didn't even make the list. I've been so, go ahead, Cindy.
I don't have anything. Merry Christmas.
I have a question for you. Explain this, please. The little note is interesting.
It's made with two hundred and fifty straight pins, so you wouldn't want a dog to get a hold of it. Or a small child.
I don't know if you're even safe enough to have it, but.
No, it's bummer. Keep an eye on me.
Yeah.
Start petting it like a cat. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you very much. Dave?
Uh, the only thing I've got is to chime in on the email that Philip sent out about trustee pay. What kind of paid up patents? And I'd like to kick around the idea of adding on or changing, changing the structure just a little bit, or at least having a dialogue about it. The way that sangray works is you have a base pay and then a stipend for, or the stipend, monthly stipend, and then pay for attending the monthly meeting over there, two weeks over here. And then another added pay for attending approved meetings in this situation would be, you know, advisory boards or C M L meetings or other, other, other other meetings that we'd be encouraged to go to. I think we'll just encourage attendance and maybe reward the future board for their participation in the community a little, a little better. So don't need to have the discussion tonight, but I thank you for the email. I think it's worth that conversation.
Okay. Obviously, we just approved Twenty-Twenty-Two budget. How that it cannot be amended. I would say, oh, well, this last meeting of the year anyway. Philip and I will talk, we'll talk about agendizing that if everybody approves. At least we can do a discussion. Doesn't mean we have to do anything, but at least we can discuss it and then kind of go from there. Everybody.
And that'd be something that would go in place after the April election, correct? Because we can't give ourselves.
You cannot, Jeff will tell us, you cannot vote yourself a race.
Right.
That's correct. Yeah.
Right.
So you can vote me a race, but you can't vote. Just say, I don't think it even works that way, does it, Jeff?
No, no, no increases for anybody, unfortunately, during your term of office, so.
Yep. So anybody new coming in April, if we were to approve it prior to that?
So me and the arm will be stuck in the old.
I know what you guys are voting already, man. Actually.
I'll be running.
Gina's position would also be because it's a two-year, correct? So hers would not qualify either, if I'm correct.
I think it would qualify.
It would.
There's a.
Trustee Nyberg went through the same scenario a couple of years back where he was fulfilling the second half of the term, and it did apply.
It did apply. Okay, so there's hope. So anyway.
You don't, you don't.
On the agenda and, and meantime, trustees think of concepts, C M L, S R S A, whatever it would be that would be, and, and we already have a certain amount in the budget anyway for, for.
Trading.
For board. Yeah. Activity. So, so it's not like there isn't something there that you can't use anyway. But maybe we can expand on that. Thank you, Dave. Anything else? Devin?
The only thing I have is, it's great to be back with you all. Thank you for dealing with me on Zoom. It was entertaining. All the places I figured out how to get Zoom. It was really great to be home with my family and my mom and help her out and visit friends and whatnot. So I appreciate you all. Let me do that. So that's great to be back.
Thank you, Devin. Joseph, you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I'm incredibly appreciative to be a part of the town staff. Got three and a half months under my belt now. Looking forward to it. Excited Twenty-Twenty-Two. Thank you all. Thank you, Joseph. Mark? Thank you for allowing me to put a hundred pages in your two hundred and one page packet. Hour, twenty minutes of your time tonight.
I'm really glad that we don't have this paper anymore. That was always fun. Norman?
None.
Nothing. Gina?
Um, I attended the, the bonfire event, just to listen in to kind of what they had to say and, you know, future events. That was held at the Asian Palette. And then I had also attended a punch bowl social, if you will, I think. Joel and just there as well. It was really mainly about the chiefy housing authority and just kind of giving a, I guess, the business group, more or less, kind of an overview of what they're doing, what it's about. It was really, it was really interesting. Becky Gray was the presenting speaker there and but I thought it was really well done. It was just kind of nice to just hear more about what they're up to and, and just the projects coming. So, but, um, but yeah, besides that, happy holidays, everybody. It's, it's been an honor to be appointed to be with all of you and hopeful to continue that next year, come April, but, you know, some of the people went, right? But, but thank you for bringing me on board.
Thank you. Libby?
I'll just want to say, happy holidays and think positive, test negative.
We've got a new phrase now. Okay. Paula? Thank you, Libby.
Just want to give you a quick update on short terminals. So we started licensing on November eighth, and since then, we now have a hundred and eighty-two total active licenses. There was a hundred and fifty-one renewals and then twenty-one new licenses. As far as their different buckets, you know, that we've worked so long on and things. So as far as our out-of-county entities, we issued a hundred and two licenses. There was a cap of a hundred and ten, so there's eight licenses remaining in that bucket. And then in our bucket of in-cap residents, there's thirty licenses. And Lilian has done a really good job getting that all fit together, so.
Thank you for that. I was wondering where that was at number wise.
That's where we're at there. And then have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Paula. Michelle?
I wanted to let you guys know that I sent out the request for proposal for audit. And those proposals are due, I mean, on January fourteenth. I'm hoping that would be what helped me go through. Maybe add Philip or some other unlucky person. Mark raised his hand.
He was reaching for his coke.
Yeah. So, well, with the passage of the budget, I am officially into audit season, so. There you go.
Never stops.
Well, it will have two seasons, kind of like California is fire and mud. I'm budgeting on it.
You could use the same terms, fire and mud. For me. Thank you, Michelle. You, you do a good job. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Joel?
Yeah, you know, I hadn't thought of this before. I think Earl's kind of genius to give everyone a present the same night that he's getting the budget approved.
Yeah.
Kudos to him all. I know. Give him nothing else.
I didn't put that together. You're good. Good. Who else do we have with us? Jeff?
You have anything to add? I, I hope you all have a great holiday. And a smooth litigation-free Twenty-Twenty-Two.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thanks, Jeff.
I don't know if he wishes.
I hope that wasn't a G. Thank you. Devin, did you have something else?
Yeah, I have something else I wanted to add. A little bit ago, I was interviewed by Rocky Mountain V S. They were doing a story on the housing crisis in the mountains. They interviewed people from Yuray, from Frisco, and from here, and that'll, I interviewed it as a citizen. I made sure to say that I didn't represent the board, but I also, you know, talked about things that the town was doing and communicated my own experience. And I think they interviewed Jed Selby and Catherine Eichel as well in town. So that'll be airing on Thursday. So if anyone's interested, it'll also be available online. So hopefully I sound okay. But it'll be interesting to hear about and
That's on NPR?
On PBS.
PBS.
Yeah.
I shouldn't have told us when because, I don't know. Or lift you up and, you know, totem pole. But there's something about a totem pole one year, seeing me like there was. Is Earl still with us? Thank you very much, Devin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still here. Great meeting. Just recap on Twenty-Twenty-One. Thanks for listening to my very long reports. I appreciate everyone's patience and thanks to the town for making downtown look so beautiful during the holiday season. It's really a nice place to spend time in the evening. So happy holidays. We'll see y'all soon.
Thank you, Earl, and thank you for the picture, and your budget was approved. Joel's comment.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, chief, I see you're on there still.
Yeah, I'm still here. That was a good, I got a lot done over here. Hopefully, there's not a pop quiz on Sean's presentation. I might not have. But it was a great night. Twenty-Twenty-One's almost in, in the record books, so I wanted to serve the citizens of Buena Vista and work with all of the great town employees and the Board of Trustees. So have Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, chief, and I'm sure you showed all of the cars parked out here that, you know, don't get tickets. And sort of jazz kidding, just kidding. Take care. Thank you, chief. Sean?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy holidays. And yeah, thanks for all you do. Jeff, thank you as well. Appreciate all your help this year recently. Really, really, really appreciate your steering us in and giving us good advice and helping us from public works wise and everybody. But yeah, have a great holiday season and we'll see you, we'll see you next year.
Thanks, Sean.
I do have one.
Yes.
Question. Is there a timeframe when the lights on Main Street are gonna be done?
I just, they should be about done. I think they're putting the concrete in, but they're a lot better out. And I'm gonna ask Mike about that tomorrow. Some of the overheads and things are, are not working. So I'm not sure if what they're and some seem like they should be on and done. They're, they're doing right now these thirteen lights on the ground here and over by the McFellany. So this should be done, but we'll, we'll check it out.
They're definitely on the downhill side, though. They're, they've been hitting them.
Yeah, but some are just aren't working.
Interesting. That'll get worked out. Thank you, Norm. Hello?
I appreciate you all. Thank you very much. Great year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope you have some downtime. I know I'm looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Philip. Merry Christmas, everybody. Libby, I appreciate you knocking down here. That reminded me of. Want to knock and turn it down.
It was key.
These ten times a meeting.
You can't wait.
Yeah, it was a fresh reminder of the past.
Otherwise, I will say I appreciate the staff.
We got two sessions, bro.
This is a good, all the way around. Board, staff. Some rough roads, but it's, it's just only gonna appeal from here. There's a lot going on, lot going on. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is here in my throat. Okay, executive session. I will entertain a motion going into the excessive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiations pursuant to CR S. Section is twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, so paragraph four, subparaphrase, and to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to the same O, except for four dash B regarding potential sale of Buena Vista Fire Station's property and also an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators for section twenty-four dash six, that four oh two, paragraph four, subparaphrase, concerning the potential acquisition of water rights. I'm a move. Thank you, Norm.
Second.
Second Volpe. Ever say I?
I.
Oh, thank you all very much. We will as executive session.
I've got a break. A little break?
Yes, take a break. I mean, I'll be.